Regulations. Regulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Theresa, take your roll, please.
Hey, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Wasslerger.
Here.
And Natson.
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 6th meeting?
Seven.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have a motion for approval of the bill as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? Don't think I see anything that's jumped out. There's no discussion, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Natson?
Yes.
Wasslerger?
Yes.
Alright, any public comments for any items not on the agenda? Oh, I'm gonna be right about 7:01, I gotta wait then? We'll jump down to special event permit for Hartford area chamber. It's in your packet. Looks like we... this is for the 20th of July, correct, Amy? Locking off the street. Alcohol use. Bouncy houses, boy, that sounds like a great combo.
Basically, pretty much maybe the last year's advance. Same as last year. We're gonna have some more inflatables that you might put this direction on May and then the band at the other end, but for the most part, the same.
Alright. Any actions from the council?
Motion to approve special event?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Not? We'll vote. Wasslerger, yes. Natson?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara? Natson, true. Let's take care of the second reading ordinance, 7:33 before we move back up to the 7:05 public hearing. Second reading, we approved first reading at the last ordinance, this is on lot and yard regulations.
And there are no changes since first reading?
No changes since first reading.
Basically, just add verbiage to our zoning regulations that if somebody wants to go above our maximum height regulation, they have to get a conditional use permit for the planning and zoning board.
Right, it just unified, basically unified.
Yep, we had that verbiage in some of our zoning districts and some of it we get, so we put it in all of it now.
Alright, any actions from the council?
Motion to approve ordinance number 7:33. Second.
Any further discussion? Not? We'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Natson?
Yes.
Wasslerger?
Yeah.
Okay, we're just short, we'll roll up here to the 7:05 public hearing on the application for renewal for the goat. Kind of get my computer rolled up there, we should be close to 7:05. So Theresa, I think we got explanation in your in the packet, correct?
Should have.
Yep. So the goat changed hands.
Yeah, they, you know, when they purchased the goat, the new owner, that was in May, and so they did just did a transfer of license at that time because the license wasn't up for renewal, because that's July 1st. Now that we are coming up to July 1st, they actually have to renew the license.
And all the payments and paperwork is in order, Karen, correct?
Correct.
Alright, any motions from the council?
I have a motion to approve application for renewal of the mall beverage line license for the goat.
I'll second.
And a second, any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. Wasslerger, yes. Natson?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Alright. We'll move down to reports. Attorney Chief Horn could not be here, his report is in the packet. Take a second to review that. Always, it looks like they've been kind of busy. Alright, next on the list, Chamber in Economic Development. Amy Far.
My information's in the packet, we did have a very nice dump tank. Experienced at Jamboree Days again this year, that's on the Chambers side. We do have two ribbon cuttings, we have one tomorrow at 4 o'clock for Daknik's Flowers and Gifts. It's the new ownership of Back Door Garden. And then we also have a ribbon cutting on Thursday for Sioux Valley Energy at 5 o'clock. So I invite everyone to attend if they are able to. On the economic development side, continued efforts with investors and developers and things of that nature. I had the opportunity to attend a EDO roundtable this morning, or actually this afternoon, with representatives from the Governor's Office of Economic Development. That was very insightful. Otherwise, everything else is in the packet.
I noticed on the Sioux Valley ribbon cutting, it says noon in your packet, is it noon or 4?
It's at 5, actually, they changed it.
Okay, okay.
They changed it to 5, everything has been updated at 5 o'clock. So... Double check that. It's been changed a couple times, but it's 5 o'clock.
Okay.
Well, they had the open house first, and then the ribbon cutting at 5.
Okay.
So that might be, open house is 4 to 6, something like that?
Yes, and then the ribbon cutting originally was 4, and then they changed it to 5, and then they went back, and now we're back to 5.
And that's 30, correct?
Yes, and we also had a very nice groundbreaking for Maple Pass. Very exciting.
Points out how interesting that intersection is when you've got a lot of cars parked around.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Anything else, Amy?
No, sir.
Alright. City engineer report.
Good evening, everyone. Not too much has changed since last meeting, just reviewed a couple of plots in Turtle Creek and South Main addition. Hopefully getting those approved soon based on how, some changes we want the surveyors to make. We also reviewed South Main and Christmas, some side plots and South Main and Christmas addition, as well as we're wrapping up the Dairy Queen. The review of the side plot of Dairy Queen as well. Western Meadows provided comments to Theresa on what the, what the development facilities complete before the city should accept the roadway. No updates for National Landing, Phase 1 or 2 at Turtle Creek. For the Bernadine Place during issues, I called Merle Norris last week and did not get an answer, well, I called him earlier today, also did not get an answer. So I will continue to reach out just to see when their updated schedule will be. Because we're coming, we're over a month now, when they initially indicated they'd get that done. So keep going on that. Sixth and Moon, I actually had the pre-con for that last week, two weeks ago? Last week and a half ago, Friday, on that one, well, you know, all the major subs and Zacharys Construction was able to attend. They did start construction yesterday, so Mont Avenue from 4th to 6th Street is tore up. Sidewalks are still largely intact, and the backhouse is actually out there today, started on under utilities on. So I checked for you, they're covering the trench for the night, they'll back out tomorrow, keep going. No, no real complaints so far, I mean, everything seems to be going smooth, I mean, I think people, you know, seen the flyers and they've been warned, made aware of the project. In the packet, you can see we do have that link to the website listed for project updates, just will update that every other weekly, just letting people know where it's at, you know, so it's getting all that.
Hold on one second, Chris, you live right down there, is any, what, do you hear any from the neighbors?
Well, I'm less concerned about people having to walk, I'm more concerned about people running their businesses out of their home. There's one in particular that lives right next to me. Any plan in place to try to help them a little?
You referring to the house on 6th Street?
Yeah.
Street?
Same thing, because there, there what, two or three houses in from Eastern?
Yeah, it's not horrible, but I know a lot of...
It's still annoying, yeah.
Oh, really?
I know, we did, I guess I did get a couple of comments on that, some other folks that just moved to town, they said, they used to, where they came from, they used to do one lane at a time, and it's switched over. That gets, especially with the utility work, that gets tight, especially with, you know, as deep as the sanitary sewer is that. You don't really be driving that close to a trench that deep, just in case something does go wrong.
Yeah, especially with the rains, you're trying to...
It is, exactly, yeah. So that's kind of what we had phases to try to minimize that, but you know, you get to a point where you see diminishing returns upon, you know, we could have made it six phases, but that just increases the cost, because each sub has to come out, you know, X number of times.
I just located, is it some person's?
Yeah.
That's how they spoil the thing and everything, so I didn't know if... There's kind of a way to make it a little easier on them?
I know in the past, in some of the projects, when they're digging right in front of there, you know, it's impossible. When they, if they back through right behind them or keep going, they can usually get back to a dirt path.
And I'd be appreciative, the thing is, you know, they would appreciate the full six weeks, a couple days, a whole...
Most of them, you can keep, every business network, they can at least get closer into them, you know, with only a couple days that they might not be able to. Like I said, as long as you don't get the rain, if you get the rain with it, then you got a mess.
Yeah.
Hope it stays dry, and they can usually make it smooth enough for a dirt path to get to the end, you know?
And I think that'd be much appreciated.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do.
Yeah.
Keep on with it, you know?
Keep an eye on that, you can't...
Where that goofy intersection is on 6th, where that drainage goes through, I don't know, is that, would that be, I guess that'd be people driving on an area that shouldn't be driven on, but...
So we abandoned that as a right of way, and so it's actually one of the private projects now.
Okay, yeah, we'll look, I'll look into that, Chris.
There's water on 6th Street, so let it go faster than, you know, there's one manhole, I think we're setting on 6th Street, which will affect them. And then when they do the water, that usually goes for quicker.
Yeah, sorry, we'll clean this basically, so there's still some time to look through that, you'll, you'll get that cleaned along, so.
That was the main thing, I'll for, otherwise it's just... Kind of walk.
Alright, thank you.
That's it for 6th and Moon Water Tower, actually, we did hear from McGuire, they, I think they intend to start July 18th on the water tower, and they expect that to take between 40 and 55 days. Just depending on weather conditions and whatnot. So about a month out on that. Then, the wastewater facility, we continue to move forward on that, you know, working through PNAAs, looking at how those done by the end of the month, and that's pretty much just line diagrams of where the wastewater and all the other liquids and solids are flowing. Just getting all that sorted out, what, you know, equipment you need to get it there, and then once we have that done, we actually, we'll start modeling the actual pipe and spaces and, you know, clearances that we need for that equipment. Continue to lay out the trunk line as well. Looking into, you know, what we need for constructability, there are portions where it does get a little deep, and we just want to make sure we have enough room, and it's not a concern, it's very contracted. So we're starting to lay that out as well. And then, you know, we're also working on that presentation for delivery methods, so if you guys think of any questions, shoot them my way, and I'll make sure we get those addressed in that presentation on the, on the 19th.
The second meeting, July 15th. We'll start at 6th or 7th.
Yep.
Kind of on trip, on hold for the biking rec trail, I don't know.
I haven't heard of it.
Yeah, provided that revised diagram showing only a seven-foot easement across that property as opposed to the, in hopes that they kind of spring to that more since it's maybe less insurance to their site. Similarly, on the storage shelter, on hold for that, waiting on the parking rec board's recommendation of kind of how to proceed.
Yeah, it's on their agenda for money to discuss, and then I'll have a recommendation during next release for you guys.
Right. On the highway to the water intersection, we switched kind of phases around, we're working on Phase 2 right now. Craig indicated to me that, you know, the develop, it sounds like the developers looking to...
Bring your chairs or something?
Yeah, purchase that land, so there may be, you know, the opportunity to get it all done in one phase as opposed to separating out into phases, which would be, which would be huge in terms of efficiency and, you know, money savings, seriously. Lastly, the Western Avenue, no change approach, we've, we're coordinating our traffic study, we'll have that here shortly, I think we're planning to do, get turning, both turning movements, speeds, on several intersections in that area, I don't think we're going to, one of the, one of the things we had looked at was taking a look at driveways and accesses there, I don't think we're gonna do that, I think, you know, ideally on one network, we kind of want to try to limit access. So whether maybe, you know, as we before, the plans maybe talks with adjacent landowners on if they, you know, be receptive to consolidating accesses, so there's fewer points for traffic to enter among Western. So, since it is such, you know, relatively short distance and few intersections, we feel even if accesses aren't necessarily consolidated, that it wouldn't have terribly large impact on the, on the plan. Any questions for me?
Not specifically your area, Amy, I know we got a letter or an email regarding the master plan. I meant to ask when you were doing your report.
Have we received one?
I thought we received an email that we were close.
Nope, the community development plan will be completed by the end of June.
Okay, did we receive an email that said that?
I emailed them requesting the final copy, and they said it'll be towards the end of June.
Thought I seen the email that said that.
I probably sent it to you regarding the community task force.
Maybe, yeah, okay. Alright, okay, not, not your deal, but I just remembered it because you guys are in the middle of it.
Yep, we should be ending it then, we'll have to...
Alright, any questions for the engineers? Good, thank you, we'll move on. Craig?
Just a couple things, we were planning to mangwatering tomorrow, but we postponed until next week, so we'll be getting it done, the roads are still pretty good shape, they're not, we're, they're a little rough, if we blade them, it'll just turn to dust, and then we'll have, you know, everybody complaining about dust, right now they're pretty solid yet, so we're just leaving them until next week, and then we'll get them bladed up, and then get the mangwater shot onto them. That vehicle fire that we had, peak and a half or whatever, that guy from ASCO was supposed to, was supposed to call me today, and he did, but we had to come out and look at it just to mill it and overlay it, get that taken care of. So if you're not aware, there was a pickup that started on fire a week ago Sunday, and it got hot enough that it actually took the levels out of the pavement, so the pavement won't last, and also if we mill it and overlay it, we'll get it, they'll save the road there, so. So we'll get that done.
It's surprisingly not as rough as I expected it to be.
Yeah, it's...
It's, it's, at least driveable.
Yeah, yep, but it's, like I said, it's gonna, it'll crumble, so it's not gonna last, so we'll have to get down, get into some good asphalt to get it, give milk and get it overlaid, so. Sewer extension project up on North Oaks, they are, they were working on the third lift today, so that road should be open by tomorrow, so businesses should be full access to getting, so, it should be good. Sports Complex, trying to get fences guys out, they're closed, and they said last Friday they'd have it done, they finally called them, they showed up, and Monday I called them, they showed up, today they didn't show up. So they've only got about two hours of work left, and they'll be wrapped up and out of there, and then we've got a little dirt work that we're gonna do, and then we'll be... The fields themselves are getting pretty good shape, we've got one very level, and the other one still needs a little bit of dragging on, so it's, it's ready, so. That's about all I have, unless anybody has anything, questions for me?
I noticed the guys hauling five gallon buckets around in the gator, do we, I thought we had a big water truck, or don't we, is that...
We do have a big water truck, but it's, I mean, it's just...
One of the trees that's formed a...
They said just simply, just take five gallon buckets.
I'm just curious, I'm just curious.
Yep.
I know they like that.
Gas is cheap.
Huh?
Gas is cheap.
Gas is cheap, yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, but I wanted to, I wanted to start blaming the people.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm just curious. Alright, anything else for Craig? If not, we'll move on to Karen's report.
Yeah, my report's in the packet, I don't really have anything to add. Just a reminder, anyone wanting to attend the elected officials workshop, just let me know by the end of the month, and I'll get you registered. How do you run that? How do you think that?
I like our sales tax revenue. It's always good. It was briefly mentioned, remember on the 19th meeting, that sex and status have a, start to go through the design, deliverable, undeliverable process. Any questions for Karen? If not, Theresa, you got anything to add to your...
Nothing too much, I just want to point out, I sent a text out to you guys about, when we're talking about the 6th and Moon Street project, we've had a couple inquiries with the parking, and if people could possibly park on the grass versus on the streets, and some of them have cars, trucks, campers, boats, or whatnot, to keep the streets less congested. I've heard from a few of you, I guess they just want kind of input from the consensus that we have a problem with it, just during the construction period on their portion of the street, obviously, when they can get access to it, you know, we'll have to go back to the normal regulations, does anybody have an issue with it if some of them need to?
No?
I think since we're tearing up their street, probably that will help them out, so, okay, if I have any more questions, I'll convey that.
She texted, you texted that to us, they did, or did you email that to us?
It was an email.
Email.
Are you not getting my emails though?
No, I'm getting your emails, but you mentioned, I thought you said text, and I thought it would be text.
Oh, and email.
I did not get a text, but...
Just give it your phone numbers.
I know, and I had to switch that, yeah.
Okay, you get the email.
Okay, I could say, you took it up, so.
And then, the pipeline, I just kind of put a little update there, the Tom is working on some interrogatories, which is basically some questions back and forth with the county, so we can get kind of some of our questions answered. And we'll probably, I think, he can't make it tonight, but at the next meeting, we'll probably have a legal session, he can kind of give us a full update on where stuff is standing with that. The mayor and I did go to the county meeting today, I'll have to give you a little update, we kind of listened to their discussion, they were talking about possibly putting a moratorium on the project in Minnehaha County for a year, maybe possibly two, so.
Yes, so, there was a, there was a gentleman from Summit, I was under the impression they were not gonna let him speak, but they did let him talk. They obviously are, they know that they're up against it, they're fighting uphill. He said they've already switched to minimum depth of four feet, five feet under the roads, are gonna make the pipe bigger under the roads, 100% weld inspection, I mean, he was just racking off stuff like you can't believe of what they were going to do. Lock valves every 20 miles. Command, 24-hour command center monitoring, I mean, he was racking off stuff as fast as he could. There's a, the folks that are, have banded together that are against this are, keep citing a study out of the Netherlands where they say the setback should be four and a half miles. And I said to Theresa on the way home, find me a spot in Minnehaha County where you can set back four and a half miles each side, I don't know that you can find it. Maybe out West River you can, but I don't know if you can here in Minnehaha County. So some of the stuff is maybe a little, I mean, it's a little reach. I agree that there should probably be some setbacks for residents, schools, daycare, I mean, they listed all that stuff off. It was, so, I had been asked by that group if I was gonna make a comment, I told them, no, because we had not had any consensus from the council. I wasn't gonna say anything until we have a chance to have the discussion. Theresa and I talked, and as she mentioned, we want to get together with Tom and talk about what we're gonna do. In Minnehaha County, we're the city that's, I mean, we're right there, I mean, they're gonna be right to the west of us, so. I would say at some point, we will probably want to address that issue with, with the county commissioners. Today, they thought that there was gonna be a vote on the moratorium, and it was not, it was just an update, they just gave an update on what was going on. But I would assume that they're gonna have a vote on it shortly, maybe as quick as their next meeting, so.
The discussion on the moratorium, you know, kind of postponing it, is that this would allow the planning and zoning for the county maybe to take a look at their zoning regulations and maybe put in some things in place, full hazard material pipelines, you know, setbacks, special regulations.
Yeah.
But, you know, that would all take time, you know, it'll take a long time to kind of research, because they not only have to look at CO2 pipelines, but, you know, crude pipelines, and, um, gas pipeline, natural gas, I mean, so there's, you know, if you're gonna put some kind of regulation in to regulate hazardous pipelines, you gotta look at a lot of different things, so. They were talking, that would be a six months a year process, so that would maybe be the reason why they would do a moratorium, so, but there was no vote or no action today, and, and so they're gonna have more discussion on that.
And from an ordinance standpoint, we, as a city, we cannot do anything, they're not in our...
They're not in our city limits.
In our city limits. But, because they are on the west edge of our annexed land, where we're gonna have potential growth, we gotta be, we gotta be aware of what they're doing.
Right.
So we don't get ourselves hemmed in and can't move past, past.
Keep in touch with the county to, yeah.
Correct, so, that's part of the reason we wanted to go to the meeting and kind of hear what they were, hear what they were talking about. And then they threw in a whole nother deal about fire department trading, how do, you know, we gotta make sure that the fire departments know if you had a leak, what would happen, what do you gotta do? What's your mitigation process, so, I mean, there is, there's a ton of, ton of things. And this group that's banded together, a couple of the commissioners said, we have never had an issue, Bennigan's, I think, has been on there for 15 or 17 years, he said, we have never had an issue that I've got this many emails and phone calls. I mean, they were just bombarded, and they're even bombarding me with stuff, so.
Do you think it'd be a bad idea to get an ordinance in place, just in case we can get annexed a couple miles further out?
And once they're in, the ground is like that.
But if we would do it before they get put in?
Before they put it in?
Can we create a, can we create an ordinance in land that we have not annexed, probably?
No.
I would say some of those landowners are probably pretty, would be willing to annex soon if they could.
Yeah, we're still there, maybe they would be, yeah.
We could stretch Hartford all the way to Humble, we play a car.
That is true, maybe.
Just thought.
We could become a municipality, pretty big this municipality.
And exist in protection of the fragile thing.
I've thought about that, good idea, Craig, we maybe want to talk to Tom about that next week, if we want to start annexing half the county again. Anyway, so...
So continue to keep an eye on it, and give you updates, and like I said, Tom will be here next week, that we can go in and have a discussion with him in legal, so.
One other quick comment, you guys probably have been here for a while, remember, we talked about a consent agenda a few years ago, and we decided not to do it. They knocked off about a page and a half of their agenda in about 20 seconds today at that meeting, with the consent agenda. So, at some point, I don't know, we may want to, we may want to revisit that, so, anyway. I found that interesting. Anyway, anything else, Theresa?
Nothing really new, to add to my report, when you brought up the community plan, I have been in contact with CECO. The Planning and Zoning Board, our comprehensive plan that we've adopted through Planning and Zoning is due for review this year, and we try to review it every five years, and so it's due for review. I have contacted CECO, they usually help us through this process, to let them know that once we get the community plan, I want to start doing that review, I want to make sure... I want to make sure we look at that final draft and make sure the community plan or our comprehensive plan are in sync, you know, so. We'll, we'll start that process with the planning and zoning board too, as soon as that comes out, so.
Alright.
Yep.
Anything else? Alright, we'll move on to new business, uh, the reason we have our fine group of, uh, folks here from Hartford Township, they have a couple of things on the agenda. Address complaint regarding industrial sewer project and discuss the street maintenance fee.
So.
Go ahead, Theresa.
So I just want to give you an update, so, um, when Christie, the secretary with the township, gave me a call in and said there were these certain issues with the sewer project that's going on there. Number one, um, they hit SiteWorks, that are contractor, hit a portion of their building in the corner to cause damage. The gravel that they took out to dig the trench on the driveway has not been put back correctly. And then there are also low spots that are kind of changing the drainage within your property, is that correct? Um, so, after she called though, I did make sure that I called Stockwell, they're the engineers in charge of it, to get a hold of our contractor and to address these items, because that's part of the project, they're supposed to put everything back the way they, um, you know, they found it, that's, that's part of the project. Hopefully, I don't know if they've talked to anybody with township, but what they relate to me is that Zacharias is supposed to be out there correcting the driveway, bringing more gravel and showing that up, and I don't know if he's been there, they were, he was going to move up there. Was he up there today? I said they're gonna move up there once they got the Oak Street asphalt gone, so hopefully he went up there today and will get that corrected for you. SiteWorks is well aware that they have settling trenches and that they need to correct all of that, and so before they get any final payments, they need to correct, and it's not just their property, there's some all along that ways that they need to address, so. They won't get any final payments, all of that is addressed, and then, um, I think he maybe talked to Greg maybe about the building and so SiteWorks is totally responsible for that, because that is there around there, so whatever damage is done there, SiteWorks needs to pay the township for.
Have they been in contact with you guys?
They have been in contact with me.
Okay.
And I told the gentleman, instead of calling me, he had to listen, to go out and look at it.
Okay.
I was very nice to him.
Okay.
And they did place gravel today.
Okay.
Okay, so.
And the, where they had dug, now, I took a walk out and I talked to him, and where they dug and threw dirt exceeding the.
Easement.
They, um, replaced it with clay with, uh, several ton of thistle seed in it. I don't know where they got our thistle seed, but we have just tons of thistles out there now, instead. A farmer came in and harvested it and paved it, and he can't do that this year. Because they never see it again, I mean, all the way along there, it looked like they were putting grass in there. I know it's been a tough spring, but you know.
Didn't get a good catch.
Yeah. And it's true.
Yeah. Yeah. We've had this conversation on grass before. And several times, so. Okay, who's, so, who would haul the clay, would that have been Zach or Zacharias or SiteWorks or?
SiteWorks is the general contractor with this project, so they're responsible for basically the entire project. I mean, they have some contractors under them, but they're ultimately responsible, so.
So we better get in contact with them.
I'll let them know about that, because that, once again.
So, I guess, my concern is, what is the timeframe on this? Are we gonna wait all summer for them to address the damage to the building, the thistles and the ground is bit and glazed, but, and of course, you're not gonna get grass again, so.
Well, our, our chance, our, our way to handle that is not pay them.
Okay.
So, we won't, we won't make any final, final payment until we know that everybody's satisfied with what's happened. And if they need to come in and do something, get the thistle out of there, or spray it, or do something.
Right.
That's gonna have to be addressed.
Yeah, because I mean, in our bid documents, I mean, they need to put everything back.
Back to the way it's supposed to be.
So, we won't hold out a project, I mean, always when they say, well, they're done or finished, we always go through and do a.
Punch list.
A walkthrough, and we look through and things that aren't correct, you know, there's punch list items they need to complete that, you know, hey, this is enough to snuff, or this needs to be done or whatnot, and so they don't get any final payment until all those items are taken care of.
So, I mean, it's half past the hour and, um, I'm looking at the timeframe of, if I come into another meeting, am I gonna have to sit here for forty-five minutes before I can address?
You're, I'll tell you what, in, uh, in the olden days, you would have been here till nine.
Uh, well, that's what I'm.
This is quick.
I guess the township, we run our business a little different, you guys have the city, we have township.
Yeah.
When we have a guest, they're the first ones addressed, because hopefully we can get rid of.
Oh, sorry.
Nope, that's fine, I know it's different, I've been to one before, I probably never will show up again, because you guys kind of wore me out.
Wow, if we wore you out, you should have been here a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, yeah.
We were here till the end of your nine, so.
So I'm not sure when the completion date is on the project, but they have up till that time after that renovation.
Okay, can you give me a complete?
I will, I thought I had, I, I wanna say in August, September, something like that, but I'll, I'll lean on that to your grade.
People's up to speed.
Yep.
So, they want to tell that time to finish, they'll, more likely be wrapping up prior to that, because they want to get, make sure it was done, so they can.
They're kind of ahead of schedule, so hopefully they will.
They stubbed up the sewer line out there too, and then they busted it off three times already, so.
That's just a marker.
Well, it doesn't matter, it looks shoddy.
Must be, must just be how they, those guys do, do work, not just those guys, but just public work.
Don't say public work.
Don't say public work.
Stub them up, they bust them off, they stub them up, they bust them off.
Just stub them.
Right. So the. So the three items that I understand, the gravel on the road, uh, the dirt, low spots, and the building are all.
I think they're.
Are all in process, let's just say that.
We'll, we'll stay on them.
We're not gonna finish the payment to them until we know that everything's satisfied from that standpoint.
Not from our property, the drainage issue.
Yeah, yeah, and from what I understand, they gotta take care of that all the way along, there's low spots along there.
Right, right.
Yeah, we, we have that sluit just south of our building.
Yeah.
And they blocked it off. They damped it off. So, there's no place for that sluit to go besides up. Now, approach your bald diamonds and our building and the whole ball. Cause that all used to drain till the north.
Okay.
Come down, dead chime, down to the.
Well, we'll keep us updated or, or let me know if other agents are on board or if anything more is happening, because then we can stay on.
And that's coffee next door in the morning too.
Yeah, that's true.
Alright.
I'm old, come on.
You mentioned, you know, it's actually affecting some income, right? If you, unless you just gave that to, to the, to behave. Was there, was there any rent charge or any, was there any exchange of money for that guy hanging in that ground?
No.
Okay.
But you can't hate it, because it's weak.
Exactly, yeah.
Right.
We moved it out this year with our ditch member, but it's gonna have to be sprayed, it's gonna have to be treated, so.
Alright, you got that on the list too?
Yep, got that on the list too.
Alright, the other topic you guys had on your list was discuss the street maintenance fee, I know I've had conversations with, uh, Karen Lee, somebody, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, somebody called me and we had a nice conversation, I think maybe called Travis too. Travis is a lot harder to deal with. So we've discussed this a couple of times, uh, when we put that street maintenance fee on way back when. I mean, the city pays it, the churches pay it, the school pays it, everybody pays it, and I don't know that, well, we use the word precedent a lot, I'm sure you guys do maybe in the township also, but we don't know that that's a, a move that is good, if we, if we say it one time, we're gonna do it, I don't know how many times we'd have to be saying we're gonna forgive it, so.
Well, my thought is this, the city gets their money from the taxpayers.
Correct.
The township gets our money from the taxpayers.
Yeah.
The only difference is, you guys can levy a sales tax, the township cannot. All our money comes from real estate taxes and wheel tax. You guys can pretty much do what you want with sales tax and get more revenue. And we pay the fire department, we pay Humboldt ambulance, and if we gotta pay the city, then we can't afford to pay the fire department what we're paying them and the ambulance what we're paying them. So are you guys gonna come up with the money that we can't pay them a little bit extra to make it where we used to pay them? Or are they just gonna be money short?
And you're talking four hundred bucks?
Yes.
Okay. But then, are, you also jokingly said maybe we should annex more. Well, then you're taking more revenue there, every time you guys annex, you're taking more township roads, you're taking more residents, you're taking more wheel tax. You're taking more from us. Pretty soon, that fire truck takes off and he gets mugged on the road, we can't afford it. Because you're not, you're not just taking the little guy out there, you're taking these housing developments and the wheel tax off them, the property tax off us from them. Because I can see you sucking up Hartford Heights. Cause you're head, you're headed east, game buster, you're going, you're going, you're going forward to Chicago, you're headed east so fast. And that's, it's rough, but you see what I'm saying and what Karen said, four hundred bucks is four hundred bucks to us. And we're sitting out there for the citizens, the farmers. Pretty soon, we're gonna be without wheel tax, property tax, why don't you do like Brandon did, I think they stocked up the whole township. And then you could eliminate the three village managers. Or whatever you want to call us. But we're here in the best interest of township to keep it running.
And the city and the township has worked together really well for the last thirty years that I've been on the township board. Not that I've been wanting to be on the township board for thirty years, but I lost a coin toss. And when we need something, we can come to the city for signs, road closed signs, whatever we need. And when the city needs something, you guys can come to us and we help each other out.
People of Hartford Township, they would rather have their money go to keeping the roads up and infrastructure versus it come over to the city for something they don't benefit from?
Well.
I reserve this, this city knows to keep all our roads, everybody uses them, yeah.
But that road right now isn't a city road, that's going by our place, that's a county road right now.
I understand that, I understand that.
So, why are we paying a ma, a road maintenance fee for a road that we ain't even the city got? I mean, it will be eventually, I got a D act there.
You're not paying on that road, you're paying into a pool that goes for all the roads within the city, so. Every parcel in the city is paying into this pool to upkeep all the roads within the city, you're not per se paying on your road.
Well, that's another thing, if we didn't know when we was gonna get charged this, we'd have fought annexation and we probably wouldn't have let, give you the easement, put the sewer and stuff through there.
And we gave you the easement, and then they doubled what we really initially signed off on, and we never heard anything until they went by and done double. So they, it took twice as much easement as what we signed off on, and we never got contacted.
No, I don't think they did, there was talk that they wanted to, but they never did, they weren't supposed to go past the initial easement.
They have a signed twenty foot permanent easement, and then we have an assigned twenty foot construction easement, which will go away once the project is done.
They were a lot further out than that.
Well, and that, and you said they were out of that, and that's on them, because they, they should have stayed within that forty feet, yes, that, that is on them, they didn't.
But knowing today, if we didn't own that a year ago, you guys would have had to put your sewer or whatever not across the township property, because we wouldn't have let you do it. If we didn't own that was gonna cost us four hundred bucks a year to let you do that, it wouldn't have happened.
Just from my knowledge, what is your budget in your income in expense?
Yeah, about, we get about, right at two hundred thousand dollars a year through the, um, wheel or wheel tax and the bridges and the biggest one comes from the motor vehicle tax, we got two hundred thousand dollars a year. And some years, we got a lot of snow removal and, or we scraped to get money for gravel in the summertime.
So you operate on about four hundred thousand income?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred just on the wheel tax?
Well, that's, that's from my.
Everything. Property.
Yeah, property, wheel tax and the bridges and I own like five categories we get money from. But the biggest one is motor vehicles. The wheel tax is kind of, is real small, I mean, that doesn't.
Probably.
But our, but the motor vehicle tax is where we get most of our money. And that's all based on every time, like they said, every time you annex a ton of ground and bring it into the city, our township loses that much. It won't be long, it won't be like Wayne Township where they've got about three sections of grounds, all they got, that's still in all the township, it's a loss. I mean, Wayne Township, it's a loss. They're, they're really moving.
Right, but then their responsibility and expenses go down too.
Well, yeah, but their township dissolves, the township ends up dissolving.
That's one where you get off the board.
Yeah. Thirty years for Jerry, fifteen for me, Matt, he's.
Forty five for Chris.
Forty.
So would you do us a favor and just, then you can do with what you want, you have your four hundred bucks. You can have your two hundred thousand, laugh, gentlemen.
No, I'm not laughing.
Yeah, you are, because that's true, take my job.
We've got bridge projects that have been waiting to, uh, that we need to get done, and they're.
Take those out.
Five hundred thousand dollars or more, and trying to do that on our budget, we haven't been able to, so, I mean, maybe, you know, any money that just falls out the door, you know, we're watching it pretty close, because pretty soon we can't do these bridges, we gotta close these roads, you know, and they're right around Hartford, so. We can't fix them, they gotta be closed down.
Well, council, any thoughts?
Well, after these guys started talking, I had different thoughts.
Okay, let's hear them.
Do we have to act on it today?
No, I don't think so, but.
I think you should sit on it and sleep on it a little bit and get back to us when you're, you know, the sun comes up. You know, true business, I, I'd take the township over. City's getting close enough, you're right in the heart of it. You got a nice shed out there, we got a brand new grader sitting there for you guys, find yourself an operator and go after it.
So is that.
Finish painting, lay down. Well, we have told them that. It's just a little private conversation for.
That's right. Well. Well, I think that's maybe the, I really do, I think we're gonna have to have a discussion about this, and. I mean, you make a valid, you, I'm not telling you don't make a valid point, but you understand, when we put this on, everybody gets paid. We're trying not to set the precedent that we're gonna let somebody not, because everybody's gonna come in and say, let us off the hook too.
We didn't know about it, well, that's kind of BS, Theresa was looking at me across Terry's head, well, I got three rental properties and none, and I'm well aware of the street deal, but I never figured that.
Didn't dawn on you. Didn't dawn on you.
That it would nip us in the butt going across township because we're government. I just never figured you could come out there and ask us for some of our money that we don't work so hard for.
Yeah.
But our people out in the township do. And we'd be fools. What do you guys fight with this? Come to our annual meeting. Last, this last March was kind of like because there's only, what, five of us there? You got housework tonight. But I'd sit on it. I'd think about it.
Yeah.
I really would. We don't need an answer tonight, but you're not getting paid till we have an answer. No, you have to pay it. Then we'll pay. But then watch out because I think there's some projects coming up that involve the township. There's some projects that you want access to our township roads. And I told Terry tonight, I says, keep your mouth shut because it's coming up. You got a sewer plant southeast of town. You're going to come out on the township road. Brother, let me tell you, there's a tax on that. Laugh now Travis. Because it's been, well, weird. I got to fly through that. You come out on our township road with any vehicles.
Are you saying that you're having to decrease what you provide in funding to the fire department and to the ambulance?
We would have to if we're getting punched with these, these fees, street fees and other things.
So, one of them would receive four hundred dollars plus, right?
Because we can't afford gravel. What's more important? An ambulance or gravel road? They're pretty well even. We need one for the, if our funds keep getting included and it sounds like a bunch of child play, four hundred bucks, what's four hundred bucks? I feel like my pickup today, a hundred and forty bucks.
All right, we'll take another advisement. We'll put it on the next agenda and discuss it again.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Yours, you might want to tie your shoe before you trip.
No. All right. No other new business? We have something for executive? No?
I think Amy was.
Amy does?
Economic development.
Move to executive session.
All in favor? Aye. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?